Poop out there. So, we have to be careful about this.
That's a technical term.
Yes. So, that's where we are.
Comments, yes?
Well, you all know I'm the dog lover. I honestly didn't know, I was talking to Howard, I didn't know. I walk my dog in Alice Park and she's all over. And it's kind of a dog area there. I think a lot of people, I walk all over the pathways. I like the fact that we're a dog-friendly community. I mean, I could take my dog in Home Depot. You know, I mean, a lot of the stores, Fisherman's Village allow dogs, people like that. I do agree, I don't think I would like to see dogs at Ponce Park on the beach. You know, people do go there. I appreciate the gentleman's, the long leash thing. My dog is trained to walk by my side, so I don't have that problem, but a lot of people do have the long leashes and everybody gets tangled up. But, you know, that's one of those things when we have bicycles and you've got people walking and you've got people running and then you've got that. So, I agree with Howard. I really, I like the idea of being able, and a lot of people like the idea of being able to take your dog with you wherever you go. And the dogs do play. Everyone doesn't want to take their dog to a dog park. Sometimes, people that go to dog parks, their dogs can be a little bit more aggressive because they can't let them out in the general, so they take them there and they play with them there. So, there's actually, any night if you just go down Gilchrist Park by the Bayfront Center or Alice Park, you'll see there's a whole group of people that kind of congregate with their dogs and the dogs play ball and they're all very good and they stay out of the way. And it's really kind of a, you know, gathering that they have, so.
So, you're saying you're going against the law?
I am. I confess.
Yes, Rachel.
I myself have two dogs. I don't go to the dog park anymore. I love the dogs, it's the people that are just weird.
There are no bad dogs.
Well, my dogs are, they were bad. They're on the small dog side and they're running the fence along the large dog side and the large dog, people don't like that. So, they don't go there anymore. But, I agree that if we do allow them in Ponce Park, it would be a perfect dog beach, but is that what we want? I mean, we have a couple of areas in the Park Beach Circle, Welcome Beach. I mean, if the opportunity's there, people, I think, would do it. And I just worry that Alice Park, that area, I don't have a problem with that. The playground, definitely no.
No.
So, I think we could loosen it somewhat, but I, Ponce Park, I think we should just keep it status quo.
Tom?
What I read from the gentleman's comment about walking his dog and having to stop when he got into Ponce because he wasn't, yeah, Ponce, because he wasn't allowed in, well, if he was walking from the condominium area and he wanted to see the water, he could just as easily walked up Colony Point and gotten to the end and gotten a view of the harbor as well. One of the issues that we have with Ponce is that it's so popular, parking has become a real issue. And if people want to put their dogs in their car and drive them down to Ponce so they can walk around the beach and I'm just not in tune with that one.
Okay. Yes, Nancy?
I would agree, I would not want to see dogs on the beach, but I wouldn't, I'm not opposed to having the dogs be able to come in around the parking area because boaters like to take dogs out with them on their boats.
Sure.
And that is our, a launch there. And I'm, I would be willing to bet somebody probably has brought their dog in and gone out and they've been out there anyway, even though it's, it is against our ordinance. So, I wouldn't, I'm not opposed to us designating an area where dogs can go and not go.
Maybe the launch. I mean, it is fine.
Or in the, just the parking area to be able to walk, but not the beach or, but I do agree with you, Kim, that just to really make our community more dog-friendly so that people can use the pathways and put out the, what do you call it?
The way stations.
The stations. Make sure that we have ample stations.
I think, I think too, you know, the point that Mr. Fauci brought up with regards to, you know, the long leashes and people getting tangled and of course, too many people are concerned about falling, you know, people who've had surgeries or whatever, they don't need another broken hip or whatever. We all need to be more friendly, courteous. We need to recognize that we're not the only people in the park, we're not the only ones that have a dog in the park, but we're not the only ones that are going to be walking the pathways or riding our bike or whatever. I don't know how we communicate that, educate our population about that. I mean, we are very, very busy this season.
Dog-friendly initiative.
I think it's really hard though, too, like what you're saying, because the people with the retractable leashes, they get upset with the bikers that, you know, everybody thinks they have the right of way. And the retractable leashes on the mertz, I've seen, it's a problem. Because if you're cruising down on your bike and the lady lets her yorkie go, you know, 20 feet, you definitely don't want a collision, but sometimes it's really hard to avoid and then the bikers don't want to use the mertz because of that reason. So, now they're on the road even though legally they're supposed to be on the mertz. So, I don't know how, I mean, can we ban retractable leashes? But, then we're going to give a ticket, I mean, going to give somebody a violation? I don't know how we can do that because they are really popular.
Yes.
A lot of, a lot of people like those leashes, especially the older people because they, that is their dog's exercise. They're not out playing frisbee and throwing balls. I mean, they let them go on that retractable leash and also the dog's not pulling you. So, but it's not necessarily a problem. I honestly, I'm out there all the time. I don't see a lot of problems once in a while. It's rare, really. I don't, I've not had any dog problems.
On Street Street, I see it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, on the mertz. Yeah, absolutely.
Nancy?
Yeah, I would agree that an education process is probably a good thing, not just for pet owners, but it's really more pedestrians, cyclists, the pet owners. It's really an overall education process because I'm sure you're like me, I get comments from people that are pedestrians that, you know, someone almost got run over by a bicyclist or that kind of thing and then, and everybody has, so.
When I will be bringing that up in my comments later as well, in terms of maybe some of the things that we might be able to do with regards to that. But regarding now, dogs in the park, do we keep it status quo? Do we want to modify it at all?
I mean, they are allowed on the harbor walk and the pathways, correct?
Yes.
They can walk them through Gilchrist Park. This request was to go into Ponce Park. I just don't see.
Not on the beach.
I'm not there either.
But then how are we, then that's another thing we've got to police, another thing we have to patrol, another thing that, you know, I just think, I think people will do it.
And Alice Park is down by the harbor?
It's across from Impact.
Across from Impact.
Which nothing is there. But who actually knows that that's Alice Park versus this park versus that park?
There's a sign.
The dogs may redesign.
I know, but I mean, it's really just, it's like a dog park.
All right. So, what I'm hearing is we're going to keep the status quo. Is that correct?
I'm okay with that.
I'm not in favor of that. I'd like, but, so we're not going to allow dogs to go on Alice or?
Well, at this point.
I would be in favor of Ponce Park parking lot only.
I think.
Just because the boaters are going to bring the dogs in anyway.
That's, if I could, that's where you have the problem if you go down there. There are no places to park there. The parking is both inside the park and all the way up along the mangroves there, there's no place to park.
I'm just saying, if they want to bring their dog in, they can only walk the dog in.
They'll do it anywhere, Nancy.
Okay.
And I guess that's what I'm saying too with Alice Park, you're going to do it anyway. So, if we keep the status quo.
I mean, I'm okay with the Alice Pittman area. That's, that's okay because I, I mean, to me, they're allowed on the sidewalk there. It's really no harm if they're in the grass area there because that's less activity than what's going on on the other side of the park.
I'm okay with that also. I think where, I'm thinking is I don't want them in where their kids are in the park, either in, either in Gilchrist or in Ponce.
Okay.
That's another good point. There's a playground there.
Alice Pittman Park, okay, but not Ponce. What about the nature park, the trail and nature park?
About the trail and the nature park?
Check allows dogs. Check is a great place to go take and walk your dog if you want to go on a hike and have your pet with you.
So, why don't we allow them there?
In the nature park?
Sure.
If they pick up, if they want to walk through there and, you know, that's the last thing, you want to be walking that trail and have mess left behind over there, it's, if they pick up.
I think Joan has.
We would have to put way stations there.
Right. Okay, Joan?
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. I just might have to check the management plan as that private area is under a management plan with DEP.
Okay.
And there may be restrictions in that.
DEP doesn't allow dogs.
Preservation area.
It's a federal, that's under federal jurisdiction.
But Phase Two will have a walkway that they'll, they may be allowed to use.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so right now, yes?
I just wanted to say one more thing. Yes, irresponsible dog owners that don't pick up after their dogs, you know, just is unacceptable. And at some point, I mean, maybe, I know we probably have a fine, I know we did that one time, and maybe it needs to be a steeper fine. I notice it more in the season, in the summertime, we don't necessarily have that problem. It's not horrible, but it just should not, you know, there are no bad dogs, really. So, everyone needs to pick up after themselves.
So, do we need to, do we need a motion to change our ordinance or just say that we?
Well, the ordinance is going to come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, I'm trying to get, Allison Pittman is what we agree on. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, that's all. That's the only additions.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. We have now vehicular traffic on Tripoli and I, Mr. Bob Harrington is here from our MPO and I would like for him to speak to it, but I'd also, will first hear from our engineering person.
Good morning, Mark Garing, Public Works. We were asked to put this agenda item together. At this point, I have no recommendations, but I do have the information of dates and actions that were taken in the past. Would you like me to go through those?
Quickly.
Yes, in 2002, the median in front of Madrid was closed to left-turning traffic out of Monaco, or out of Madrid, I'm sorry. And in 2011, with the work at Burnstore Road, the median in front of what was, used to be Juicy Lucy's was closed. In the results of that, in 2002, we saw, or late 2001, we saw a dramatic increase in traffic on Tripoli. And then further in 2011, we did, we saw another increase in traffic. Traffic used to be about 14% of the subdivision traffic out there and now it's 25% of the subdivision traffic, all travels on Tripoli. And I'm available and answer any questions.
Okay. I think we heard a lot about the issues from all of our constituents here. I think perhaps maybe Mr. Harrington can provide us some data from the Department of Transportation.
Yes, for the record, Bob Harrington, Director of Charlotte County Public Order MPO. I did get, this was brought to my attention at your last meeting, in fact, by Council Member Pravky. And at the time, I went back to our office, contacted FDOT, asked them about the history of it. They're, in fact, they were researching it, looking at what took place, why it took place. And I, in so many words, explained to them that, of course, since that time, the traffic has grown. And of course, people are going to do what is easiest for them, such as using Tripoli to exit that area. I said that there's a real issue out here and I took other staff, we went out, drove it ourselves, looked at it, and I agree totally. In follow, in follow-up discussions with the DOT staff, they suggested a formal request from the city to look at, and you may want to recommend, a warrant study to look at the accessibility into that area as well as the possibility of putting in a traffic signal somewhere. That is, I mean, that's just a possible solution. I'm not saying that would be the one to work. But their recommendation again was to get a formal request after discussion, of course, because I explained to them, there was going to be a discussion regarding this at this council meeting. They were unable to attend, but they said they wanted to follow up on it and, but they would look forward to a formal request of some sort under a signature of either the manager or the mayor requesting that DOT look at this for a possible solution, which may include a warrant study for that area for possible traffic signal.
Excuse me. What's a warrant study, just a little more detail for?
A warrant study basically is looking at the traffic that crosses through an intersection to see if there is a possibility, a possible need for a traffic signal at that, especially on a US highway that has that lane width. And it's a common practice that people will ask for, cities, counties and such will ask for a warrant study at intersections to look at the possibility of what can we do to better the movement of traffic through that area.
Kim?
Would this study also include, you know, possibly a left-hand turn lane or?
It will look at, it will look at all of that. Basically, we, I think that with the information that was provided to me and I've going forward and some of it's been forwarded already to DOT, that would, that helps support what your needs are. And it shows the history, as Mark spoke of, of what the traffic was and what it is now. And it shows the history in aerial photos of what the accessibility is to the, was and is to the area now.
Yes, Nancy.
So, this warrant study would be specific to the Madrid, US 41?
It'll look at that, it'll look at that whole area. Because in showing, as was provided to me, one of the photos shows where the traffic has got to go down and cut through the back and around Home Depot and it's, if they don't go that way, they're going Tripoli.
Right.
So, yeah, it would look at the whole thing.
There's one of the concerns that I have as I've listened to the residents for quite some time now, and the reason why I really wanted this brought up is I've had conversation with Captain Lewis about all the things that PGPD has been doing and I applaud them for what they've attempted, you know, really tried to do quite diligently, but they can only do so much. And to me, anything that we might do, I agree with the comment that was made about traffic calming measures and that kind of thing. The concern I have is that if we try to do traffic calming measures on Tripoli, it's just going to force residents to, or other people to drive onto Bordeaux or go down Madrid and back up Monaco. I mean, there are other ways. So, anything like that is only a Band-Aid and it's not really addressing the root cause of the problem. And that's what I really want to see addressed, is the root cause of the problem. So, we have a permanent solution that's a good one.
Along the lines of the temporary solutions such as speed bumps, that kind of thing. What we found in working with various neighborhoods, not just here, but in throughout the southwest Florida, is a lot of the neighborhoods, they say, yes, we want speed bumps on there, until they get them in. Once you get them in and the first time that Mrs. Jones has a seizure and an ambulance comes and picks her up and bounces her off the gurney, they change their thoughts on speed bumps real quick.
Yes, Rachel. Rachel?
I'm in favor of a warrant study. The only issue that I would have, that I would think that, I'm just looking from a common sense standpoint, is that if you did light, have a light there, you would have one, two, three lights right in, back to back to each other, which would not be such a great situation either. But if they're willing to look at it and give us, you know, different solutions, if the light, you know, because they would be so close in proximity to one another, if they could at least, if that would get us some solutions to look at, I think it would be worth it.
I'm just saying, a traffic signal is one of the ideas, if they, and they do have, they do have policies about how close they can be. So, that would be, of course, like you just said, they probably wouldn't want to do that. But, you want to use the DOT lingo, a warrant study to come look at this? In fact, my recommendation would be that you have them come here first, DOT staff, and listen to the issues from all of the elected officials as well, the audience, so that they know there's a real need here and they're going to look at it than more, at more than just one type of solution.
We love talking about things three, four, or five times, so it's no problem. We'll put it on the next agenda.
I would have, if I could have drugged them here, I would have had them here today, believe me.
Send them a copy of the tape.
Tom and Nancy.
I think it's a wonderful idea, Bob. I was going to ask you how long something like that might take, but I'm starting to get a sense, if they're coming here, then we're going there.
No.
But in the interim, I think whatever we can do to reinforce to the shop owners and Publix and whoever else owns places in there or rents places in there, that they, to let their delivery trucks know not to use Tripoli, let them, they need to go and make, make the long turn to get up north and that it's just, they need to, we need to reinforce that through chief or through the, through the police and just be vigilant with that.
Well, it is PG, oh, I'm sorry. It is PGPD that does visit the shops and in my conversation with Captain Lewis, he said that some of the shop owners tell us to get out of here right now. Others are very willing to listen to us, but then they change drivers and so one driver may be educated, they get a new driver, and so the new driver doesn't know. And I've, you know, personally seen the public semis going down Tripoli, so I know other people have as well. And when it comes time to make a motion, I'd be happy to do that, so.
Maybe we just have the neighbors out there with big signs, no big trucks, please or something. Yes, I think we could, I think we're ready for a motion.
So, let me make a motion to, that we, what should it say?
Prepare a formal request to DOT.
Possible motion might be a letter be drawn up under the signature of either the mayor or the manager to DOT stating what your issue and problem is and providing the facts that you currently have and showing that there is a real need out there. Just be forewarned, if you mention the big trucks going down the streets, they're going to point the finger at you. And they're going to, because it is an enforcement issue. And if not, you, your law enforcement, but you can, I like the idea of going out with the shop owners, specifically Publix, and telling them, hey, your trucks are going down a street that's marked and we're giving you a forewarn, they could be ticketed. So, that's just one idea.
Yes, Tom.
I had a conversation with the manager of Publix and he advised me that public semi-trucks, semi-trucks do not use Tripoli. And I said, well, what about your, some of your other deliveries? He said, they, he told me that they do not use Tripoli and he told me that he would go and put a sign up that they are not allowed to use Tripoli. And I would suggest as an interim solution that we try and get some of these other shop owners to put up signs as well, indicating to them what the law is.
Even though he said they don't, they do. I've seen it with my own two eyes.
Carolyn, I have a question.
Yes, Rachel.
One of the gentlemen mentioned stricter limits on the size of trucks. Would that be something we should do as well or?
I think that the signs that are out there now basically speak to, what is it, six?
Six wheels.
Six wheels or something like, I think that's specific enough. You don't want to get into weight because somebody are going to be saying, oh, he looks like he weighs too much. Where if it's based on the size of the truck visually, I think that that should cover it.
All right. I don't know that we need a motion, but I think we have consensus that we'll prepare a letter to FDOT identifying the issues that have been raised to us, will provide the background data that Mark has already prepared and.
Request a warrant.
And request a warrant study. Again, I understand with studies that may take forever, but we will, we will move on that then. Okay? Thank you. And thank you for all the individual comments because I think that does help give a clearer picture of the issues. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, we're now going to, it's already 11:30. We're now moving on to our Charlotte County YMCA lease renewal options for Bayfront Center.
Marion Pace Procurement Manager for the record. The current lease with Charlotte County YMCA will be expiring March 31, 2015. And per the current agreement, they did submit a notice of intent to renew. And also, a term in the agreement states that when, if we do renew, we do have the right to negotiate a fee up to 10%. In your packet, you did have their notice of intent and a copy of the agreement.
Comments?
Well, I think, I'd like to hear from Randy. I know they have some plans going on there with the sailing. I know we're all interested in the sailing center and there's kind of a new plan in place, so I think it'd be nice to hear that.
Hi, I'm Randy Dunn, CEO with Charlotte County Family YMCA. We have been there, I think this is, was an initial three-year term, and then we had two renewal options for one year each. So, that's where we're at. We're at the end of the first initial term and then we're at our first option. As I've become involved with the Bayfront Center and the use of it, one of the first things that I tried to put together as the CEO was some youth sailing there. I mean, we have this beautiful harbor and we need to have sailing and YMCA is there to serve the youth and the families. We have had two summers now of summer camp sailing, very successful. I have a very strong group of volunteers. Gary Tremmer's here, he's our lead volunteer, if we want to talk about sailing. But there's a lot more going on at the Bayfront Center than sailing. There's a lot of programming that occurs there. We do yoga, line dancing, Pilates, Zumba, we have fitness aerobics. There are a lot of programming, especially with our, what we call silver sneakers, and I don't know if everybody's familiar with silver sneakers, but there are insurance products out there that encourage the use of places like the YMCA by providing free membership basically for silver-haired people like me. There is a lot of other YMCA activity there. We do, we have our summer camps. We have, in addition to the youth sailing, and sometimes they're going on at the same time. We use it for SRD days, which are school release days, so we have children there at that time. There are a lot of weddings, there are a lot of public use times there. Most weekends, there's something going on there. Not always a wedding, sometimes it's become, life celebrations have become kind of popular as well. So, there's a lot going on there. I can tell you now, as I stand here, that the economics involved in running the center there for the use of the YMCA and the public is not, we do not break even, even, we do not even break even. It is, it is costing the YMCA to be there and to provide these services and to help our community use that building as best it can be used. But that's, you know, that's the YMCA's choice. We came in there, we do a lot of mission-type programming and I would consider this kind of in that category.
Questions, comments?
Well, I guess in the beginning, we really want, we wanted to focus on a sailing program there. And it's almost like there's a lot of things that have happened. When I went to the regatta recently, I spoke with Brian Gleason and he shared with me that the county has a plan to put a youth sailing program over in, at the beach complex in Port Charlotte. Now, when Patty and I went over to Jensen Beach, I mean, I just fell in love with that idea of having that sailing center that they had that would bring, you know, we're supposed to be a boating community. And in my mind, that boating community was, that was the perfect example. You, you're bringing, you're having regattas, you're bringing economic, having an economic impact on your community. People are staying in the hotels, they're eating. I mean, even the tourism gives money toward that program because it is such a great vibrant program for the community. And that's kind of what I had hoped for, for that area. But then after the regatta, I kind of learned that Charlotte County, they were kind of planning one over there. And I said to Brian, we need to do this together. I mean, it need, not that, I don't think that there should be a sailing program there because the volunteers there, I mean, last summer, I think it was 80, 85 kids. The summer before, I think it was another 80 kids that were, went through the summer camp there, which was, I mean, the summers before, it was like 10, 12 kids that were going through the program over and over. So, it really has grown, not like we hope, I mean, in our mind, you know, the vision for it. But I guess, you know, to have that vision of that eight regattas a year and that type of thing, we probably need to get together with Charlotte County and figure out how that all is going to come together.
I have, I have some real problems in terms of renewing. Your contract two years ago had three different phases in terms of what you're going to bring for sailing. The YMCA could do all of those other programs anyplace else in the community, anyplace else in the county. But that is a waterfront facility. And it seems to me that what we had asked for two years ago was that this focus on sailing, not only for the youth, but also for adults, also for persons with disabilities. So, it was the kind of a combination kind of thing, that this would really bring sailing again into the community. And so, Randy, I just, I'm just very, very disappointed that we haven't been able to, that the Y and your committee that was supposed to be overseeing your sailing program just has not moved this forward when there's just so much opportunity. I have adults coming to us and saying, we I have adults coming to us and saying, we used to sail at the facility. There is no adult sailing there now. And so it's, I mean, and it should be. Tom?
I share the very same concerns, you know, two years ago, when the Y came to us, there was a program presented to us that there was gonna be, you know, phenomenal sailing events taking place over there. There was gonna be full-time instructors, there was gonna be capital expended into the sailing program and that you've gotta make it all come together. Well, I, am I, I don't see it, that it has worked out that way. I think maybe the Y needs to look outside of its own umbrella or its own environment and consider working with another group wherever they might be, wherever they might come from, but work something out with them to, uh, get sailing on the harbor. And in order to entice that to happen, I think we should consider a month-to-month lease for the time being with a caveat that the Y works something out with another group to make this a viable sailing center.
Nancy and then Rachel.
Yeah, I, as I, um, tried to digest this, the first thought I had was, was if the Y is unable to get something going, who's gonna operate a waterfront activity center? And we have it on our plan down the road to have a waterfront activity center. So, um, I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, but perhaps I should do it under council member comments. A suggestion that might, for us to consider, that might help us.
I think now would be an appropriate time.
Now, okay. I had a conversation with Nancy Johnson, Team Punta Gorda, um, CEO. And I started thinking about this and the concern I have is that we're going to design a waterfront activity center and, well, how do you know what you want? Who's gonna operate it? What's it gonna cost? What, what's the business case to put that together? How big should it be? What should it look like? What are all the programs? It seems to me like now's the time for us to start to convene a community, um, a group. And the reason I ask Nancy is because Team Punta Gorda is this visioning team. And they could be the convener because they are nonpartisan and, but the, convene a group that would include the Y, the Fisherman's Village, uh, the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance, you name it, include them. Perhaps an open public meeting that could include all of us to start to begin a planning process to define what should this be? And this process doesn't need to be, uh, it started now, it would not, it could take a while to do this. But we could put a lot of thought behind it so that then, um, when it comes time to design it, we know what we're looking for and, um, there are a lot of, like you have gone to Jensen Beach. There are a lot of residents who, who have made comments to me, they go elsewhere, they could participate in this process, they go elsewhere in the country, take pictures, you know, we have a list of things, they can come back with the data uh, and help us with that center that, of whatever it's supposed to look like. Um, because in my mind right now, I'm not sure who's gonna operate what it is. And I would love to see it just be amazingly, you know, an amazing facility. So that's, that's what I think that we should consider.
Rachel?
Oh, I have concerns with that because the boat club's there till 2021. So we have plenty of time to vision and design and do all that. Um, my focus right now is the Y and, and reading through what you proposed two years ago, you know, there are big, big holes. You said you, you hired a full-time director, but now you're talking volunteers. So obviously, there's been a, a shift in your organization. And I love Silver Sneakers, but like Carolyn said, you have the Punta Gorda Club, you have certain facilities that, you know, you have that same programming. So I, I like Tom's idea, month-to-month, I don't know, you know, what could come of that, but maybe something. I know you're doing a great job managing the building with the rentals 'cause I have a couple of friends that have held different events there and they were very happy with, with, you know, fundraisers even and they raised a lot of money and, and it all went very well. So that side of it, I think the Y is a perfect fit, it's just the programming aspect I think that really needs some work.
I just wanted to make a, another brief comment. They did have a director, they had a couple of directors, um, tried to raise money for boats and that type of stuff, having fundraisers. All of it was kind of mediocre, I mean, they raised money, you know, for other things too. What, uh, if, and tell me if I'm not understanding this right. What they're trying to do now, in Inglewood, they have a sailing, the Y has a sailing program and there is a group there that runs that sailing program. And this group is trying to pull that together to make our sailing program identical to Inglewood's sailing program, which is a bigger sailing program.
Again, from our, two, two years ago, the plan was that Inglewood would be helpful in supporting and helping to train or whatever. Randy, where are we going with it?
They have been. Uh, we've been, we're in constant contact with Inglewood. Uh, they do have a great program there, a 501(c)(3), their sailing program is a separate 501(c)(3) under the umbrella of the Venice YMCA. So we have a strong group of volunteers. We did initially start, when I kicked this whole thing off, we did hire a director and, um, he's moved to Texas. Sailing, the people in the sailing world are great, great, great people and their heart is, is really in it. But it's hard to keep a group of people focused, um, because they're fairly independent folks. And I'm, I've been working very closely with them, we meet typically on Tuesdays. And Gary is here. Gary's prepared, uh, a little bit of, um, information here for you about their plans. The YMCA's plan at this point would be to support and financially and, and all other ways, their formation of a 501(c)(3), which they have, they're in the process at this moment. We would then allow them to basically operate the program under the YMCA for insurance reasons. And as volunteers, which is, in, in Inglewood, sailing is, under the Y, is all volunteer. It would allow them some autonomy to do things a little bit differently. Under the, under the programming of the YMCA, it's, it's a little bit tougher, we have, we have to do things in a, in a certain way. It'll, it'll give them some autonomy. So that's where we're moving to. And as far as adult sailing, uh, we have offered adult sailing and we have done some adult sailing. Uh, and we still are currently offering adult sailing. We just haven't had many takers.
Have you been marketing it? Because that was part of, again, I haven't seen it, I haven't, and I don't know where, maybe I'm not looking in the right places.
Yeah, we put it on our Y website and, you know, we have, uh, about 9,000 members in the Y locally. So we put it on our constant contact that we have these available. I, I, if you don't mind, I'd like Gary to come up here and talk to you a little bit about their future plans and I, I can just tell you that, unless somebody else has some more questions for me, I can tell you that we've had what I consider to be a very successful program.
Carolyn, I just have one quick question.
Okay.
One thing that just popped in my mind when you said, you know, working with the Y, different rules and such, is there security as far as background checks for the people that are gonna be working with the children?
Rachel, very, very tough background checks.
Okay, good, 'cause if they're separate, I still want to know that there are some protections going on.
If it's a program that's operated under the umbrella of the Y, then they still have to meet that scrutiny. That's one of the other issues that we have in recruiting volunteers. They have to pass a very tough background check.
Thank you.
For sure.
Okay, let us hear from.
Okay, Gary, come on up.
I'm Gary Tremor, I'm Vice President of Learn to Sail Incorporated. We filed all our paperwork, um, and we're just waiting for the official approval. But as I understand it, we can now operate as a 501(c)(3). You mentioned a moment ago about the month-to-month lease. Well, as volunteers and as I mentioned, we're pretty independent people, we're sailors. We wanna expand the program. We've asked for a grant to, uh, obtain more boats. That was our limiting factor in the past two years, is we run out of boats for the kids. We're trying to keep everything neat. You mentioned Jensen Beach. I too would love to see something like Sarasota Sailing Squad or St. Pete. We just don't have enough water out here. It's very shallow, we have to keep our boats small. Uh, we're moving them by hand, we don't have cranes and lifts, uh, to use. But I think we're well on the way, uh, to getting something. It just doesn't happen overnight. We're a community that everybody retired, bought the boat they always wanted to have. They find out they're too big to sail now. So, uh, a lot of my friends are now going to smaller boats. Perhaps not the dinghies that we're teaching in, but the kids we're teaching can turn out to be crew on their bigger boats to help. It just takes time. And my volunteers do not wanna manage a building.
How many volunteers do you have?
We have 10 extremely active, 40 that have signed up and would like to help. It's just hard to find a specific job, you know, for everybody to do. We need help with, uh, we've started a webpage, uh, to help in the promotion. I was trying to think of some of the other things that we've discussed.
Have you worked at all with the Boaters Alliance?
Uh, yes, we have members, uh, Jay's here. Sarah is on MAC, we've asked MAC for additional funding. Uh, we want scholarships, we've worked with, uh, or we're in conversation with a group called Aim Crossroads about teaching some of their kids. I've been an instructor for 35 years, I worked for the Red Cross previously. I'm a US sailing instructor and an ASA sailing instructor.
So how long do you think, um, you will need to get this program really up and running?
What you're describing takes years. You know, seven, eight regattas. If you look out there, you'll see all our volunteers out on the water doing these other regattas, it's just not under the Y umbrella. We're doing it now.
One of the things I think that I would like would be, um, more information on the actual programs that you're doing under the sailing program, so that if you're having events or whatever. Somehow, we're not getting the reports, um, from the city, I thought was part of the.
I've provided this to Randy. We're just waiting for him to say, yes, that's fine, we'll promote all those things.
Yes.
I, I, I think that's a wonderful idea, I, I really look forward to see it happening. They, they'll need some help from the Y. I, I believe my idea to, in order to incentivize the Y to contribute to that would be this, I can just put them on a month-to-month basis until this program is, is organized. They will need help, they won't be able to do it alone.
Yes, Kim.
My only, my only hesitation with that would be, if Randy is scheduling weddings, does he do it month-to-month? Okay, I can't schedule you next month 'cause I might not be in charge next month? Because if they're not there, who's there? Is it us? Is it the city? Are we now managing the Bayfront Center? That's all, that's my only hesitation.
I think I nominate Mr. Levin.
I appreciate it.
Maybe we could do a conditional year and see the next, you know, year really have some better reporting. Because I just went on your website now, it says, Bayfront YMCA, hours vary, family sailing program. Learn to sail as a family Saturdays 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM by appointment, only 225 bucks. So not everybody's gonna be able to participate in that because of the cost, I would guess. So, um, I think we need a better accounting of what is going on.
Jay, did you have something to add?
Yeah, Jay Buckley, um, sort of a, I guess, a, on this volunteer board of the Learn to Sail, uh, which is now just being generated. Uh, we have a really talented lady, CPA, who is, uh, handling the, uh, setting up of the 501(c)(3). And, uh, we meet, as Randy said, on Tuesday mornings. Really talented guys that can repair boats, they can do anything with these boats. And, um, as Gary said, but were restricted, have been restricted in the past as to, uh, finances in order to enlarge the fleet.
Excuse me?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Do you have, uh, you mentioned that you're submitting a grant to MAC?
That is correct, and I sit on MAC. And, and, well, it's a, it's a, it's a sort of an all-inclusive, uh, grant request in that, uh, some materials that are needed for repairs as well as to increase the size of the fleet. And those, that grant, uh, well, the grants will be coming in, this coming meeting will start, which is always the second Tuesday of the month, or Thursday of the month, uh, MAC convenes. And this month and next month, we'll be reviewing all of these grants. I think the problem in the past has been finances and a, and a mixed, and a mixed, uh, feeling about who's responsible for what monies. The reason for the Learn to Sail Incorporated being started is this will finalize a new, this will be a new group under a 501(c)(3), but for insurance purposes, operate for one year as, under the umbrella of the YMCA. And then, uh, we'll take it from there. But I, that's, you know, I just offered, I think we, I think we have a much better chance now than we had before for the type of sailing activity that you want. We've discussed, I might say, Judge DeAlessandro has now, uh, volunteered to be one of our directors. So we, we are interested in trying to get a program involved with the high schools, uh, kids, uh, or high school. As someone mentioned, uh, scholarships possibly for kids that can't afford to pay the tuition to learn to sail. And we've even had some discussion about the veterans, uh, wounded veterans, uh, in area. So we've got a lot of good ideas, we just need to get financially healthy.
Who's gonna be chairing the board for the 501(c)(3)?
We don't have a chair, we have, uh, as we said, Dave Blair is, just had surgery, so he's not here. Uh, but he is serving as the president and Gary is vice president. Treasurer is, uh, Joan Alexson and.
Who am I missing?
Yeah, right, and our secretary.
So you have your organizational structure and you are expecting approval on your 501(c)(3)?
We're hoping, there's no guarantees on any of these MAC grants, but, you know, we're gonna give it the best shot.
Not the grant, but the 501(c)(3).
The 501, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Joan has said, she's, she's filed all the proper papers, she's quite capable.
Any other quick, yes, Tom?
Yes, quickly, do you feel you have the support from the YMCA that's gonna be necessary to make this, make this program work?
Yes.
Yes, Rachel.
Um, I'm moving in favor of a, a conditional year, but I, I don't know how to word it so that we have some reporting this time next year to see what has been accomplished.
How about if we have reporting on a quarterly basis? Give them, give them at least three months to get, and we have a, a report coming to us and we can share it with all of council.
And they can say how many people they served, what activities they did, how many people were affected, that type of thing. I would like to see that.
I thi, I think we recognize that the Y's programs in all the other areas are obviously active and, and doing fine. And I'm sure that that facility is being used well and maintained well. But our concern from the very beginning was, and again, because of the, um, those that were wanting to manage that building also wanted to have a sailing program. So we were very much concerned that that sailing program moved forward. I would agree with a, a year's condition, I don't know. Perhaps, David, you could give us some guidance?
Well, I think really the simplest thing to do is simply extend this contract by one year.
And those, those options are there in the current document.
Without putting any other specific requirements into the agreement, but you can, you've already articulated what it might take to get a new agreement or an extension of this. And, and if they give them, fine, if they don't give them, we can still terminate this at the end of the year because it's just one year.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, so we have an understanding, yes.
Can, can I just say also, and David, um, it has a term clause, it has a, an out clause for, for the YMCA and for the city of Punta Gorda. At any time that you want the YMCA to step aside and find someone else to run the facility, you have the right to do so. I, I think that, and, and I'm gonna have to defend myself a little bit here, guys. From starting from zero, from, with just a thought and an idea and something that I've been personally working on for a few years with Judge Alessandro and, and others, I think we have come a great distance from where we started. And we have served a great deal of people through our program. There's a long ways to go, it just doesn't happen as quick as we would want it to, to. It just doesn't happen as quick as we would want it to happen. So, you know, and in defense of the YMCA and all these volunteers who have worked so very hard, I have to be able to at least tell them with some assurance, yes, you're going to have a place to live here for, for at least a while. Or they won't be incentivized to go forward either if we're on some very temporary basis. So I, it would be hard for me personally to accept anything less than at least a year term with, under the same conditions that we have, that anytime you choose, or the Y chooses, we can part company.
Kim, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know when we went and visited that program, I believe the gentleman there told us it took 16 years to get where they were.
Which program?
The Jensen Beach. So it does take a long time, and there has been a lot of things going on. But I like Nancy's idea because we do, you know, we have a long time, but I think we're all kind of on the same page. We would love to see that building be a sailing, be for kids, have that element to it. And in our minds, we're picturing that at some point. So we're trying, you know, we're putting all of our eggs in your basket to make that happen, so that when the new building does come out of the ground, we know exactly what we want, because the program's already in place, and it will just move into a new facility.
Yes, Rachel.
And, you know, what you just said, if we had some hard facts down on paper that what you've done in the last two years, instead of just, you know, you just simply wrote a letter of an intention to renew, we really never had any follow-up with what you proposed that you were going to do till now. So I'm glad that you're here, I'm glad that you're sharing that information, but I would like, you know, simple reporting of some kind, just so we are all educated on what you're doing there, and how, you know, how it's moving forward. I think that's the piece that's really missing for me, at least.
Nancy?
Yeah, I think that the discussion on the beginnings and planning, I don't intend for that to say it has to be done by the end of this year. It's really beginning the discussion because residents bring up the waterfront activity center without really, I don't think, thinking it through. So it would give the community an opportunity over a time period to be able to think it through with, and then really do the homework. And it could be a couple, several-year process of really working on things, so that it's, it really helps us.
And I think that that is kind of like another agenda item for us, perhaps for a future agenda.
Yeah, I just want, no, Randy, our residents really appreciate what you guys do over there. They'd love to be over there doing zumba and yoga and all of the other stuff that they do over there. I think it's wonderful, and I think we all appreciate that. We really just aren't trying to do everything we can to encourage you to work with whatever group that you can to get some kids and adults out there on the water.
And that's what the YMCA does best.
Okay.
Let me tell you, but I, but if you were to put me on a month-to-month lease, that would be very hard for me to live with.
I'd like to make a motion to
Before you make a motion, council member, the intent of the agenda item was to renew for the first one-year renewal, either at the same rate or to exercise the option for an increase. And that's one thing, if you could, please include that in your option.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease for one year at the current rate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the lease for an extension of one year at the current rate. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Randy. Thank you.
With the quarterly reports?
Quarterly reports.
Well, that doesn't need to be in the motion.
No, but we want to make sure.
Just to reconfirm, and I assume that that would go out into a letter confirming that, too. Do you want me to include that in the renewal letter? The quarterly reporting? I sure will. Thank you. Thank you. All right, recommendation, it is now noon. Do you think we'll get through this in another half hour? Otherwise, we're going to break for lunch. Recommendations from city officers, city manager?
I don't have any.
Good. To the attorney?
Time to break for lunch. Howard said that since I didn't have but one ordinance to read, that he wanted me to use this opportunity to give you a briefing, and it will be a briefing, as to how our meeting went with the county on Monday regarding the mining. It was so brief that I was about three minutes late because of traffic, and I walked into a room, conference room, that had a lot of members of county staff, staff and attorney's office sitting there, and we had representatives from the city, and it was announced that it's been resolved. And that was the county saying that. I was handed a piece of paper that basically took the amendment that we wanted to have kept in, you know, the language that essentially prohibits renewals or extensions of mine permits within the watershed out of the comp plan. They said, they replaced it with language that said that essentially, they would give the city an opportunity to sit at the table. I'm paraphrasing, but that was it. And from my immediate reaction was, well, that really doesn't tell us anything or give us anything, because we don't even have a table to sit in. And let me just back up very, very briefly. When I first was talking about this at the first meeting that we had here, I was saying that one of the things that, there were three things that I would need to evaluate to tell you what the impact of the removal of the language would be, and what we might want in its place if it wasn't the same language. And the three things that I was saying that I would need to see is what the copies of the county permits for the mines that are currently in the watershed, copies of the state permits that authorize those activities, and copies of the county's regulations at the time that these mines were first approved, and compare them with what they are now. Because what we were being told at that last meeting was, the reason why, not the last meeting, the meeting that, when the presentation was made here, was the reason why the language was no longer necessary is because the city is well protected by their permits and the city's, county's regulations and the state's regulations. And in order to be able to make a recommendation to you as to whether that was correct, these were the things that I needed to look at. On Monday afternoon, Joan LeBeau and I spent the rest of the afternoon looking at the files, and there were quite a number of files relating to each of the mines that were in there. And then we're going to get, bring back the copies. I'll just simply say, and this is very premature at the moment, but I would suggest to you that from what I saw in the way the county approved permits for these mines, I really didn't see anything that gave us any type of protection for the watershed. And a lot of that has to do with what it was thought that needed to be protected, whether it was wetlands or discharges into the creek, you know. There was minimal stuff even for that, but nothing directly from what I saw, and it's early on in the review, having to do with the impacts to the superficial aquifer that serves as our source of drinking of water to Shell Creek. So I told them, even before seeing all this stuff at the meeting, I said, well, look, you know, it's, we think and we appreciate the opportunity to talk, but we thought that the talking was a little bit premature, because we hadn't yet had the opportunity to do the research that we wanted to do before we got together. And so, you know, they were very cordial about that, and we agreed that when we had an opportunity to be educated as to what was necessary, we would get back to them. But again, to answer what they gave us, and that was essentially a seat at the table, didn't tell me anything.
Well, in my review of that also, it said that we could give them our input, our feedback, and that they may consider it.
Well, and then
And that was the word "may" that really, really bothered me. It basically was pavilion.
Yeah, and, well, and at what point in time would we even be given that input? Because already they're, they are approving extensions for these mines that would, that would otherwise be expiring. And I got to say this, I mean, no, I won't say it.
I have another question.
Yes.
I thought one of the components that we were sold on, on our position, is a public hearing of some kind, and I did not see that in the language that they used. And I would think that we would still want some, like you said, some, the seat at what table? Like specify where this hearing is going to be, and make sure that it is a public hearing, because all of our citizens and customers could be affected, and they should have some involvement in it.
And that's what ultimately I want to be in a position to say, but not only that there'd be a public hearing, but what would it be a public hearing about? And I'll know that after I have a chance to kind of review things. Things that kind of concerned me from my initial look at it is that a lot of these mines receive what they call a vested right determination, which essentially means that even though there were new, more stringent county regulations to protect the watershed, a lot of these mines were grandfathered, so that they didn't even need to meet those. And I think the ones that, the ones that they're grandfathered from have also been superseded by another set of regulations that are being told to us as being, you know, very stringent. While that may be true, but they don't appear to have any application to the mines that we're concerned about regarding the watershed. Now, again, it's very preliminary, and I could be wrong about that, but that's, I haven't seen anything yet to change my initial observation.
And our letters have already been submitted, though, to the other agencies?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so all of that is in process.
And they're writing letters.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I looked at it with a very joyous eye, because I've got a lot of experience in challenging these types of operations.
Thank you.
These meaning mines. So I know, you know, how the game is played, and hopefully, we can, we can do a better job in protecting the watershed as a result of our involvement.
And as a follow-up to that also, your recommendation last time was